Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our panel this evening. My name is Michelle Nafak, and I'm here with some folks that I'm going to introduce momentarily to get the evening started. So before I introduce the panel, I just wanted to share a little bit of context about what our landscape is with respect to school boards. So for those of you who don't know, according to the National Center on Educational Statistics, we've got 14,000 school districts in the United States, which represents 95,000 school board members. And those school board members are overseeing school districts that represent 50 million students, and they're controlling $600 billion of public monies to run those districts. So we're talking about a lot of resources and a lot of time and energy from the folks sitting on this panel who oversee it. So let me jump into it and introduce the panel. First, we've got Matt Haney, who has a joint degree in law and MA from Stanford, and he's currently serving on the San Francisco Board of Supervisors and a former San Francisco School District School Board member. We've got Jennifer DeBrienza, who is currently a trustee with the Palo Alto Unified School District and has a PhD from the GSE in 2008, I believe. We've got Devin Conley, who is on the Mountain View School Board.
Wisman.
Thank you, Mountain View Wisman School Board, and has a master's from the GSE. And our last moderator here, needs no introduction, but this is Professor Emeritus Mike Hurst, who, in addition to all of his many academic accomplishments, has served as the president of the State Board of Education under Governor Brown.
Thank you, Rod. I just want to make a few opening comments as well. In 1930, there were 127,500 school boards. Now there are about 14,000, as Michelle indicated.
Wow.
So you can imagine what this was like at our formation. So the school boards were formed in the 19th century. The United States is the only country I know of that has anything like a school board, where the school boards are a direct authorization of state government. They have no independent powers, other than what state governments give them. Woi is descended from a kingdom, so it only has one school board in Woi. No other country, as well, financed its school system through local property taxes. Most of the view state or federal taxes, particularly national taxes. So out of the use of the local property tax came the idea of a school board of elected members. Of course, it was overwhelmingly rural, and wherever you had enough fields that came together in a reasonable amount, you had a one-room schoolhouse. So a relic of that is San Jose, which has reduced school districts, but has 20 left in its city boundary, two of which have one school in them, and the middle is San Jose. So there is, you know, no pattern to this in that regard. And something we'll discuss tonight is, the school board was given, has all the formal power. You may read about the superintendent, but the superintendent serves at the pleasure of the school board. And the school boards were set up with legislative, executive, and judicial powers. They're legislative in that they pass resolutions and policies and things like that, and major kinds of statutory work in that sense. They're the executive in that they are responsible for executive affairs. They approve the details if they want to of the budget. They take citizens' complaints. I remember a Berkeley school board, and I was in her office, and somebody called her saying the shower was broken at Berkeley High, and she went out to fix it. Talking with the superintendent. And they are the judicial branch of government. They decide on student suspensions in many legal areas. Many of these districts have been sued. I've read about Palo Alto, you know, monthly I read of a suit being handled by that board. So they are really expansive in power, yet they are elected laypeople. They were mostly, in the beginning, farmers, obviously, and that's sort of an overview of the school system. They were divorced, in most cases, from city governments. They were independent. The view was that the school board should be, quote, "less political" than those grubby city politicians. So Matt has been on both sides of that table. So you'll find that they're not well-linked to the other boards. So, given that as a background, let me start with the panel, and we'll begin with Matt over. What was your motivation for serving on this? Why did you run for school board? It's a lot of time. Boards sometimes begin at 6:00 PM and go to after midnight. Nobody here is paid more than $500 a month. So then you have to get elected. That's interesting. So why would you do all this?
You're taking me back right now, because this was, I ran in 2012. I was, I think, just one and a half years out of being here at Stanford. It was a couple of things. I mean, one is, I just started showing up at school board meetings in general, and I was involved with some of the issues that they were dealing with, and I became interested in their work. And I think at some point, if you're showing up every Tuesday anyways, and you're on the other side of the dais, you just think, you know, why don't I maybe step up and have some formal authority here? I was spending a lot of time in schools. I ran a nonprofit that worked with kids, and so I was seeing firsthand, I think, some of the ways in which the school district, I felt, you know, could do better. And, you know, I think at the end of the day, for me, as someone who was living in San Francisco and seeing just tremendous wealth and technology and innovation and growth, and seeing a city that was not including its children and its schools at an adequate level, I mean, it was at a time when every year we were hearing about layoffs and cuts and, you know, that schools couldn't afford books. So I was motivated to be a part of helping to bridge, in particular, I think, some of the growth and technology and innovation in the city, and being able to bring some of that to the schools. So I didn't really know what I was getting myself into, to tell you the truth. It is a lot of work, but I'm glad that I did it.
Jennifer, your school board has been known to go sometimes after midnight?
We have gotten it much better.
Okay.
Only midnight?
No, we're out by 10:30 most of the time now. And I'm going to say that the school board has worked really hard to think about the efficiencies necessary. We just didn't need to be spending that much time. But I decided to run for school board because, little did I know, there was a pressure campaign of my friends. I got a text one day saying, "We think you should run for school board." And then the next day, I got a phone call, "You should run for school board." And I realized later that it was back in, so I was elected in 2016, so it was the spring of 2016, and the school district, some parts of the administration of the school district had applied for a grant to start an alternative school in Palo Alto. And some parents, who were looking for some more progressive teaching practices, which Palo Alto is not known for across the board, there are certainly pockets, were very excited about it. And the school board shut it down. And they shut it down because they said it was inequitable. If we did get this, it was a Lorraine Powell Jobs nonprofit, and it was like $10 million. And if we had gotten this, and we had opened a third high school, and it had outside funding, and was this new thing, it wouldn't be fair to everyone else, if everyone can't go there. So parents understandably got really frustrated, that they understood that there were some equity issues, but how do you just decide not to innovate at all? You know, the answer wasn't, "Let's not do this, but let's do this, because here's what parents want to see." So they were really frustrated, and they knew that I was an educator, and that I was working, doing some consulting locally, and asked me to run, and I thought it was a ridiculous idea. And quite honestly, I thought that I was unqualified to do it, which a lot of people have said, "That's because you're a woman, that's why you thought that." But I thought, like, what do I, how am I qualified to serve on a school board? They said, "You have a PhD in education. What do you mean?" But interestingly, on the campaign trail, that was something that was used against me a lot, that people said, "You don't need to be an educator. That's someone, the district could hire an educator. We need management people, we need lawyers, we need budget people, MBAs. We do not need an educator on the board." I did win with the highest number of votes ever recorded in Palo Alto history, and I would like to think that I am making the city think that it was worth their while. But having one person on the board that's been really focused on just the educational lens, and as staff brings you rationale for why they're doing something, I can, I bring a different conversation to the table than the business people and lawyers do.
Yes, you mentioned a really interesting character, another characteristic of America, that the slogan was, "Education's too important to be left to educators." Therefore, it was to be a lay board of laypeople, and as, most of them farmers, who aren't experts on education. And so you had that tradition, but it's been moving, I noticed, more towards more educators or people with education backgrounds on the board. In the 1950s, it was very rare to find somebody with an education background. Devin, your district has absorbed another district, so the Wisman District, east of 101 in Mountain View, and so you're serving two different communities now.
Well, they all fall within the Mountain View boundary as a city, so that brings us together. I, you know, I leaned into the education piece, too, as well, when I decided to run for the board. I started as a classroom teacher right after college, even though I'd studied architecture, and kept getting laid off. Went back to school, did a city planning degree at, please forgive me, at Berkeley. And then I came here and did my master's in education. And I ended up going back into the classroom and actually taught in the district where I'm now on the board. About 10 years ago, I taught there for two years. And then I taught in San Jose for a couple of years. And when I had my son, who's a first grader in our district, I moved into education consulting and teaching part-time. I decided to run for the board because I care deeply about student achievement and about equity. And after the 2016 elections, I was having a hard time. There was a feeling of helplessness and not being able to impact what was happening to our country. And I knew that the most vulnerable people in our communities were going to be impacted even more after the 2016 election. So I decided to start local, get more civically engaged. I applied for and was appointed to our Parks and Recreation Commission about a year after that. I joined the League of Women Voters, and I became the school board observer. So I would go to our school board meetings, and I would produce monthly or bi-monthly reports that were published online about what was happening in our district. I hadn't intended at first to run for the board, and if you do ever run for something, there's a filing deadline. It's the last moment when you can actually pull your papers, turn in your paperwork, get everything done. And I read a newspaper article a week before the deadline that we had two incumbents up for reelection. Only one of them had pulled papers and filed to run. And then there were three people in our community who had pulled papers. They hadn't filed those papers yet, and none of them had any type of background in education. And we didn't have anyone on our board who had worked in education. So I felt that I could not not run, and had to do something, and decided to run after that.
Okay, yeah, and you mentioned you consolidated two districts around a town boundary, which has been a problem in California, where, of course, as the school district boards, districts evolved and the boards evolved, it had no particular relationship to what became the cities. And that trying to get community identity around the cities has been an issue. So let me start again with you. There is no prerequisite experience for required training. Given your experience, Devin, what do you think should be, should there be minimum qualifications? We have school board members who never graduated from high school, still in the United States. And states have been reluctant to regulate this. What are your thoughts on that issue?
I'm curious to see what everyone else will answer as well. I do not want to put a false barrier that would exclude people by education level, by socioeconomic status, by race or ethnicity. So I don't have in mind a minimum requirement. I think there are many people who could be great representatives of the different perspectives of our community. That being said, I really, really appreciate people who work well with others. You have to, you're one vote out of five, and you have to build consensus and make some really, really hard decisions as a team. Our school board, unfortunately, had a previous trustee who did not work well with others. And there was a lot of shouting and things kind of ground to a halt in the district. It hurt students, it hurt the district budget, it was very, very problematic. And so I really appreciate people who are willing to come together and try to make these hard decisions, even though we might have very different perspectives.
Other comments on minimum qualifications from either of you?
I'm not a big fan of minimum qualifications. In fact, I think one of the things that, at least I've seen in Palo Alto, and I'm sure we're not the only ones, that the people who can afford to serve are people that tend to be of higher income, right? I mean, I forego a bunch of my consulting income to do this. So Palo Alto, in the aggregate, has really high test scores, and, you know, we do really well on the state dashboard. But if you parse it out by subgroups, we do not serve SED, students of color, special ed students, at all, very well. And I would love to have some of those people on our school board to bring their voice and their experiences. And it's harder, right? If you have a low income, and you are working a job or two jobs or three jobs, how are you going to spend the time to work on the board for $400 a month? I mean, it doesn't let you. So if, I would love to see some barriers come down to let a different population of people serve than we typically have.
Matt, any comments on minimum?
I agree with that. I think in San Francisco, it's also a very political position. So it's a citywide race, you have to be able to raise a lot of money. And it's probably political everywhere, but that also creates a lot of barriers. And it ends up, you know, it's whether you can get the Democratic Party and the Union and, you know, all of that, which, you know, I'm not sure that's the best way to choose who's going to do the, you know, the most effective and be the most qualified. With that said, there's been a very wide range of backgrounds of folks who get elected to school board in San Francisco, and I think most of them actually do a pretty good job. So I guess, in that sense, despite the concerns about the political nature of it, I think the voters have tended to do the right thing in the people they've chosen. So I wouldn't put minimum qualifications. I think it's harder in places where sometimes nobody wants to run, and so the people who raise their hand just get on, and that, I think, you know, that can, it's more about making this something that's more attractive, that more people want to do, reducing the barriers so more people can run, and really demonstrating the value and the importance of school boards, rather than undermining them and just putting everybody in charter schools, stuff like that.
You mentioned that you run citywide in San Francisco, because a big movement has been by lawsuits and other, to make the boards be more split into sub-districts, because there's a different group that is alleged gets elected citywide. The Hispanic groups in particular have been behind a number of these lawsuits to get district-wide elections stopped and then elect them by different sub-districts. Are either of your districts?
We are not.
Not right now.
You're both citywide?
San Francisco's unique to be a district as large as ours that is elected citywide, and it's actually something that comes up a lot. People ask of whether we, you know, support becoming districts. And for the city council or the Board of Supervisors, it is by district, but school board is not.
Is not, okay. So let's start with Jennifer now. What are the most important things that you've learned working with your superintendent? And how you work with your superintendent? The academic literature had three patterns. The board dominated the superintendent, in some cases. These are all, if you've got all these school districts out there, you're going to find that. And then the other was, the superintendent dominated the board, and the board was, view was, "Well, we hire the superintendent, we fire the superintendent. He or she is the chief executive." And then there's the in-between, where there's some sharing of power, nobody dominates anybody. I suspect that's the typical pattern. But how would you describe your view of what the role of the board should be vis-à-vis the appointed superintendent that the board appoints?
So our board has actually talked a lot about this. The CSBA, the California School Boards Association, which are really the group that puts out some, a lot of model policies for your district to adopt, so you don't have to write them off from scratch, have an annual conference, do a lot of advocacy work. They call it a governance team. They say your board members and your superintendent are a governance team. My board has pushed, I've learned a lot about this from what other board members have said. I wouldn't have pushed back on that. I'd say, "Okay, that's, you know, the way it is." And two board members specifically on my board have said, "That's actually not right. We are the bosses. The buck stops with us. We are the ones elected. We hire you, and we need you to carry out the vision, and we're going to make the decisions about adopting the budget. We're the ones that are held accountable to the public. We're the boss, and you've got five bosses." We hired, a year and a half ago, a new superintendent, and he seems to share their view. So it's worked out so well so far. But he very much talks of it as if you think of, from vision to implementation, with in-between sort of being a design, getting into the nitty-gritty a little bit. He says, "The board really should spend about 60 to 70% of their time in the vision. They're deciding the direction and whatnot, and very little time, all the way down, in implementation." That's the board, if the board is calling up, saying, "This teacher in this classroom is doing," that's not what the board should be doing. Whereas the superintendent is kind of in the middle, they're taking the board's vision, and they're making sure to design programs and adopt curricula and lead the team in that direction. And then implementation is your administrators and your teachers, and we should be doing less of that. So I would say in our district, the board leads the superintendent.
Matt, what's the situation in San Francisco?
I was thinking about this. I got to work with two different superintendents, who both had very different styles on this. The first one is Richard Carranza, who's now the New York Chancellor. And he was much more out there. He was constantly coming with new initiatives and that sort of thing. But at the same time, it was a good balance with the board. And then we had a superintendent who was much more, I think, worked more under the board in terms of the board's vision, and was more deferential to the board's responsibility. But at the same time, I think what's more interesting for us has been each board member thinks about this differently. So I've had a lot of colleagues who like, will be like, "This teacher in this school, and he needs to do this," and getting into that level, or try to fire certain administrators. And a lot of the controversies that I experienced when I was a board member had to do with this tension between the role of the superintendent and the board members. Some board members really thought it was their role to intervene in anything. And sometimes the superintendent let that happen, and sometimes chose to draw the line. So it is sort of confusing, right? Because one's running the district, but technically, we're the bosses, so, you know, there's no clear line of what you can't do.
Yeah. Devin, how's that work in Mountain View? Yeah, you've gotten in the newspapers the last, the other two districts are, got more ink.
Well, you know, it's nice, we have a local newspaper. I'm going to give a little shout-out to the Mountain View Voice. So the Fourth Estate is healthy in our community, and it's lovely to have them. It does mean that sometimes we're in the newspaper. You know, the way we discuss it on our board is that we say the what, and the superintendent says the how. So we say what needs to happen, and we set the policy, and then he has to figure out the logistics, the minutia, the implementation. And if we meddle in that implementation, if we start intervening with particular staff or teachers or something like that, we cannot hold him accountable for his job performance because we are undermining his job. So if we want to be able to hold him accountable and be effective, then we need to stay out of kind of the nitty-gritty on the ground and not interfere with staff. But we set a very clear vision for what needs to happen and goals, and we hold him accountable for reaching those goals.
Good. Okay. Now, what about your relationship with the teachers and the teachers' union? And discuss a little of that generally, but also about your role in the collective bargaining contract. I used to hold collective bargaining contracts up in my class and say, "This is the bargaining." And it was like that, in small print. And so the board is the ultimate responsibility. So answer it both in terms of the negotiation process, and then whatever else you want to say about the relationships between the board and the teachers in that regard. And we'll start with you and work that way. Start with Devin, you know.
Have you gone first yet?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, you just did.
All right, we'll start with you.
Oh, me?
Yeah, all right, go ahead.
Okay, I'll be quick.
Let's defer.
Well, you have a militant, pretty militant union up there.
I want to hear about it.
Actually, just last night, I wasn't there because I'm not on the board anymore, but they showed up with like 500 people. They blocked the streets, they took over, they had this tactic that they would use sometimes, is they would get there before the school board members would get there, and then they would take over the whole thing, and they would sit in our seats. And then they would, like, sing songs and chant and all this stuff. I appreciated it. It was one of the more enjoyable things about being on the school board. You know, because I think that ultimately, they were trying to push us to do things that we wanted to do, that we should be doing. I mean, I never disagreed with them in terms of what they were fighting for. You know, the things that they're asking for, right, like smaller class size, more money for teachers, like teacher housing, you know, these were all things that we should be doing. So I think for me, it was sort of figuring out how, in that relationship, their organizing and their activism and their anger, in many cases, could then be leveraged for us to be able to do some of the things that, you know, we wanted to do, whether that was like putting a parcel tax, you know, saying, "Okay, we can't give you a 30% raise this year, but how about if we got it to 10% over three years, and we work together to do a parcel tax to be able to increase?" So I think it was a lot of that, and, you know, ultimately, my experience with them is that they held us accountable, that they pushed us, and that they made our school district and our school board better. So even though they're like militant in that way, I had an overall very positive experience. And without them, I do think, knowing how we operated, knowing how the bureaucracy and the staff operated, that we would, that if they weren't there and they weren't organized, that we would do, we would be less effective and less accountable, not just to teachers, but to students.
Do you get into the actual collective bargaining agreement? Well, you do, you must get in with salary, working conditions, so drafts come before the board?
Yeah. When we were in negotiations, every board meeting and closed session, we would hear an update on the bargaining, on particular issues, salary or other matters that were open with the Union, and we would give the direct guidance of what to do.
To the negotiating team.
To the negotiating team.
Negotiating team, which works under, Jennifer, how's that?
We were much less in it. I mean, I agree with you in that often what the Unions are pushing for are the kinds of things we want to be doing, and we think benefit kids. Of course, there's finite number of dollars, right? And we have to be, we are stewards of that money and have to use it as wisely as we can. But we tend not to get into the nitty-gritty as much. Typically, our head of HR and our CBO and an attorney go work, we do something called interest-based bargaining. We started doing about a year or two ago, and that's been really helpful in trying to make it less combative and more of a conversation, and what mutual interests do we have. And I would say more typically, near the beginning, the team, the negotiating team comes into us and says, you know, "What are your parameters? What's your outside number that you think?" Because we are a basic A district, community-funded district, so we don't know what our property taxes are going to be until the end of the year, and we're negotiating before we have the dollars. So you get the estimate from the county and have an idea. And so we give some parameters, and then they go off, and we'll get occasional updates. But for the most part, you know, if they say, "Well, they really want something about substitute teachers," or, we look to the team to say, "Is this reasonable, right? What seems okay to you?" So it's great, we have a team we trust. We have a good relationship with the Union, but we're not as involved as San Francisco.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I need to go first.
Relationship with the teacher union and the teacher?
Yep. So it's interesting, I have a little bit of a dual vision. Having taught in the district in the past, I still have friends who teach in the district. As a school board member, I cannot request, I would not request a meeting with a staff member, just kind of like out of the blue. I wouldn't call up a teacher and say, "Hey, I want to sit down and talk to you about this." But anyone who asks to meet with me, I can sit down and talk with. And so I do hear about working conditions. And so I do hear about working conditions, salary, things like that relatively regularly from teachers through personal relationships and having been in the district before. We are in the process of negotiations right now, which is a little bit why I was ready to hunt the question down. But the, what the board has said in the past as a goal for negotiations is to keep the, and, you know, we haven't stated anything publicly this year, but this was the last time the contract was negotiated. The board discussed keeping our salaries within the top 25th percentile with kind of surrounding districts and comparable districts, especially looking at the funding base that we have. And so, you know, I think making those types of discussions transparent to the community so that people know what the constraints and the goals of the board are around teacher salaries and working conditions is a really positive thing. But then the negotiations itself. We have a team that does the negotiations. We get reports on it in closed session. And like I said, we're still in the middle of that process right now.
Okay. Let's move on to... Jennifer, why don't you start on what do you think is where you've had your biggest impact or want to have your biggest impact? If it isn't done yet, you're, you know, none of you are finished with your term.
It's not done yet.
So you can answer that as either had it or want it.
I'd say I'm in the middle of it, I hope. One of the things is, we've made our meetings a lot more efficient. And the person who became president before me started that, but I worked really hard during my, I just termed off as president. And I worked really hard for us to look at what's making it onto our agenda, how much time are we spending on it? We've got a lot more efficient, and that just makes it easier for the community to participate, right? If it's 9:30 and they want to comment on something, it's a lot more likely people will come out than if we're talking about it at 1 o'clock in the morning, which when I was running for board, that was very typical.
Yeah.
So that's one thing. But the, one of the big things that came to mind as soon, I already mentioned it today, as soon as I got on the board, was this issue of equity or inequity, that your profile predicts your outcomes in our district. And so I've been on the board for three years now, and what I have succeeded in is that it is the number one priority of our district, as stated in our district. Everyone on our board would say it's number one priority. What I'm still working on is how to get there, which of course is always the, you know, it's really for the staff to decide. But right now, part of the board thinks that the problem is the low test scores, so we need to fix, we need to address that. That's the problem, is low test scores. So let's get tutors, and let's get more supports, and let's make sure that we have good professional development. And I would say that's a symptom of the problem, and that, like most systems in America, there is a racial aspect to our system. There is bias in our system, and if we are ever going to get to the root of it, we need to address the system. We need to alter the system. I don't have three people. It's what Mike first said. I definitely have two people, and I'm working on a third, that unless you can convince two other people, you are not an effective board member. I mean, and this is something that was a hard lesson for me when I first got on the board, and I'm still working on, but I'm getting closer. And we are definitely doing the first thing. We are providing more supports for kids who aren't doing well. But, you know, as their wounds are gushing, instead of us going back and making sure we're not making them bleed, we're just sticking Band-Aids on them right now. It's making me a little crazy. So that's what we have made a lot of progress in, but we have a lot of progress to go.
So you need three of five? Is that what you're, so you have, you, yeah. So a lot of this is coalition building?
Yep. And it's hard. People have very different perspectives and experiences.
Yeah. Okay, Devin?
Well, so there are two things that I'm proud of. One is still in process, one we recently accomplished, and it's a little bit smaller, which is why we were able to move on it more quickly. So the, I was elected in 2018. I was sworn out on December 20th. And in January, we usually have in January or February, a board retreat. And at the board retreat, the board sets goals for the superintendent to achieve across the district. It's usually two to four goals. You don't want to have too many because then can't really accomplish everything that needs to happen. But those goals, because they're what the superintendent's job performance is evaluated on, they trickle down to the principals, to the school sites, all the way through every level. So something that I advocated for and that we ended up adopting as a board goal, just a month after I was elected, was, and it seems like a small goal, but to make sure that every child each year achieves one year of growth in English language arts and in mathematics. And that sounds really simple and basic, but our system is not set up to do that well. But we now, you know, since then, that means that, and with the acknowledgement, that our students who are already behind need to make more than one year's growth. But our students who are in the middle, sometimes they get kind of overlooked because they're doing okay, but they're not doing great, and they're not necessarily making the growth they need to make. Our students who are high performers, they're not getting the differentiation that they may need to keep growing themselves, and then, you know, really holding accountable that, like, at least a minimum standard of growth for every single child every year. And out of that, our district has adopted a system-wide online test that we can use across the district. It's iReady. It's not perfect, but it's a lot more data than we've had in the past, and students take a diagnostic and then follow-up tests during the year. And it has a parent communication component. So parents get reports about their student's progress, and that opens up the opportunity for conversations with students and families around what children need to actually make the growth that they need to make and improve their outcomes. And we're even looking at, in our calendar for next year, moving our parent-teacher conference to after that second assessment, so that there is real data that teachers can sit down and talk to parents about, and give families some action items to work on to support their kids. That's like the big one. It's going to take a long time to do, but I'm really proud that that's in place. The small one, our dress code, was last updated in 2003. It was very inequitable. It really targeted girls and somebody who might not be gender-conforming. And it had, you know, old-fashioned restrictions about bra straps and the width of your straps and how long your shorts could be, and if you have a body type where, you know, your fingers did not extend far enough to cover up your skirt length or whatever, like, it was very, very, very problematic. And so I proposed it as an agenda item this year, and we got it on the agenda, and I wasn't sure where board members were going to jump, and we got a lot of community engagement around it. There were students and parents who really wanted this to be fixed because girls were getting dress-coated, they were pulled out of class, they were shamed, they were missing instructional time. And so we adopted a new dress code policy just last month. And I'm really proud of that. But it's a, it's a small, that's a small one.
That's big.
Yeah. It's interesting, the range of decision, those, and that they're both important.
There's no bounds.
And demonstrates again the reach of the board and what you need to get into. Matt?
I also worked on dress code, actually. We actually had a policy that banned hats in the schools, and I ended up, and it also relates to school boards, because we had, at the time, we had a fellow school board member of mine who wore a hat all the time to board meetings. That was like part of her style. And so when I was going around to the schools and talking to the administrators and asking them why you have this hat ban, they would, you know, of course, they would say, well, it's about, you know, respect and about a professional setting and all these things. And I would say, well, my colleague on the school board has a hat. It doesn't seem to be a problem for us, so there's no more hat ban. It's a common public schools. There was a couple of things that I worked on that I'm proud of. One was actually the first issue that I worked on, which was school discipline. We, you know, like most school districts, had a policy of kicking students out of class and out of school for things like willful defiance, which now, thankfully, the state has taken action to change. But at the time, we were only one of a handful of school districts, which as a result of a policy that we worked on with a big coalition of groups, ended suspensions for willful defiance. Created a whole revamped policy around restorative justice and PBIS and all of these things called the Safe and Supportive Schools Policy, which I authored and ended up, I think, having a positive impact, not just on school discipline, and we cut school suspensions in half over a couple of years, but also just the environment in the schools where, you know, young people feeling like the school was a place that was out to get them or judging them or, you know, pushing them out rather than pulling them in. So I think that helped make a difference in terms of school culture. We also passed a policy at the time, there was less than 2% of San Francisco Unified Students were taking computer science of any kind. So I authored a policy to have pre-K through 12 sequenced computer science education for all students. So now 100% of middle school students in San Francisco are taking computer science. 100% of high school students have access to it, but it's, a lot are taking it. And we have computer science education in almost all of our elementary schools now. So in San Francisco, it's like, you know, a language that a lot of young people need. So that's something that I'm proud of.
Good. Okay. Well, the final question, and then we'll open it up, is what are your thoughts on, for the audience, on how they should get involved in the school board activities and the board? How can they have impact? And what are your views of effective public participation that they could be guided by? Jennifer?
Okay. So I assume other districts are similar to ours, although we may have more committees. But there are so many different committees, commissions, long-term, short-term, that we need community participation on. A bond oversight committee, a parcel tax oversight committee, a curriculum adoption committee. We always have parents and community members on there. We have a very active LGBTQ committee, just lots of different ways. In fact, right now, we're going out for a parcel tax, so we have the campaign committee, and we need a lot of community members out there trying to get everyone to understand what it's about. So that is one way to sort of just test out this interacting with the community in a variety of different ways, and being at board meetings, hearing the very varied perspectives. And the other thing is coming to school board meetings and talking, and that's hard because people have jobs and kids and busy lives. But if there's a particular issue that is of interest to you, there's always an opportunity at a board meeting to speak, either if it's not an agendized item at open forum, usually at the beginning of the meeting, or if it's, there is an agendized item right during that time period, you can come and have often three minutes to speak. So coming and doing that and speaking up and hearing what other people have to say really both gets you to better understand how the system works, and if you're interested in eventually running or serving, it gets people to know you and hear you and see you speak up.
How do I find out what these commissions and study groups are? There's a group that oversees your building program.
Yep.
That is not board members, but is, how do I find this out?
So for us, you can go on our website, on the district website, and there's an area you can go to that sees all the areas. If you stay tuned into the board meetings at all, or even just read, look over the board packet, it's an agenda item for us when we're forming a new committee or have to appoint new committee members. So the board packet and/or our district website are the two places for us.
Okay. Devin?
So there's a couple of things. I think one thing that was really helpful for me when I did eventually want to run was that I had experience with the parliamentary process. So that is something that you can get by, every city has different advisory bodies for their city council itself. So Parks and Recreation Commission, there's usually a Human Resources Commission, maybe an Arts Committee, or a Library Board.
Plan for Transportation.
Well, the big one, Community Development, yeah, the Environmental Planning Commission. So these are appointments, they're not elected office. So you apply, and then you may be interviewed by a group of city council members and then appointed to the position. And it's a, it's, I really enjoyed that as an introduction because it gave me an idea of the Brown Act, which we haven't talked about yet, and kind of some of the legal logistics of serving in this capacity. Another thing is just basic networking. I agree with the get involved at the board level, at the school level, and join these different things within the district. But it's also just talking to people who are doing the work. So reaching out, having, you know, asking for coffee with a board member, with somebody who's on one of these committees, and then asking them to give you three more people that you should talk to, to learn from, and kind of building your network and learning more about what's going on in your community. What's really amazing is there are so many people who are doing a significant amount of work, they're not getting paid hardly anything at all, and it's public service, but I didn't even know what they were doing until I started reaching out and learning in my own community, and then I picked the place where I felt I could be the most effective and helpful.
Matt, in the big city of San Francisco, how do you get in?
I'm not sure I have that much more to add. I think all that, you know, makes sense. There's committees. I served on two advisory committees before I ran for school board, one which was a Restorative Justice Task Force, another which had advisory role on a big chunk of city funds that was given to the school district around arts and enrichment activities. You know, one thing, when people come to the board meetings and give comment, I mean, that does have an impact. It does help us understand what's going on. We listen, and so even doing that makes a huge difference. And then just also getting involved at the school level itself, you know, there are usually advisory committees or community involvement and such that can happen at the school level, and that can help you kind of leverage into impact in different ways the school district policies.
So I'm going to turn it over to Michelle to run your question and answer.
Yeah, I want to make sure we get, lots of people have opportunities to ask questions. If you have a question for anyone or all of the panelists, go ahead and give a hand raise, and we'll kick it off.
Hi there, my name's Aditya. I was curious about how empowered do you feel as board members to engage with the fiduciary part of your job? So things like understanding how district spending is aligning to your board vision, weighing financial trade-offs, and ensuring that funds are being used as equitably and effectively as possible.
Anyone have a burning desire to dig in on that? First?
Not that empowered. I mean, it's hard, right? It's like so much of it is determined before it gets to us, and it's constrained in various ways by, you know, by the state spending and LCAP and all sorts of things that, you know, and also I think it goes to the board role, right? Once, I mean, the superintendent acting as the CEO brings you a budget, and all of a sudden you start saying, well, actually, I want $20 million to go over here, and I want you to completely reorganize things. I think it's more for us, as we set the overall framework and the vision, we expect a budget and a financial to come back. And it becomes a big issue, especially when we come back with news we don't like. Like, they come back and say, well, we got to cut $40 million, and we're going to have to lay off all these teachers. And all of a sudden, the school board's like, wait, hold on a second. Like, I thought we had a thing where you made this all work out, and I didn't bother you. And then all of a sudden, they're really digging in. And usually, what I've heard, for example, from the school board members who are dealing with these layoffs in San Francisco, is they're saying, well, I think the cut should be as far away from the classroom as possible. Like, what the heck does that mean?
Amen.
So I think it's hard for school board members to really dig in, and at that point, they do have to dig in when something bad happens like that, but still ultimately, they're kind of setting the overall vision and framework, and the superintendent and the finance team, budget team is really doing most of the work there. I don't know, that's my experience.
If I could answer really quickly, we, I've been on the board for three years, and I've served under three different CBOs in that time, basically one each year. And the budget has been presented to us in very different ways. Now, I don't have a business background, I was not, don't have an MBA, which is evidently a big loss when you're serving on a school board. So, but I really didn't have that experience, and $250 million is a big budget for someone that hasn't dealt with a budget like that. But just last night, we had our board meeting, and I was so grateful to our CBO who's new this year, she is starting to develop the budget for the year. And very often, like Matt said, you see what's called a rollover budget. It's just, we're going to assume all the same stuff, and then, oh, look, here's $600,000. Would you like to do this with it or this with it? And she came to us last night with just, here are assumptions, before I put together our budget, here are assumptions. So we spend $150,000 on breakfast at these five schools in the morning, you know, every day all year. Do you want to continue that? I'm assuming you want to. It's in the budget. It was here this past year and the year before that. Do you want to? And we were able to have a conversation about, well, should it be at more schools, or are kids actually eating it? Or what have the people it's supposed to serve, what have they told us? Is this useful, or do they feed their kids at home? And that money could go elsewhere. You know, and then we went to some other topic. Oh, you know, our bus drivers, we're actually having trouble retaining them, so we would like to expand that budget so we can give raises and we can pay them for seven hours a day instead of five. So it was the first time in my three years that I've really had those assumptions come to me before we had a budget in front of us. So we were able to say, yeah, this is what we think about this. We want to see more about that. If you think this should stay, okay, but we don't, you know, we don't see it as a big thing. And that has made a big difference already, just in this first conversation.
So something that we do is, and I mean, all boards do this, you look at your budget three years out. You're never looking at just the budget for that school year. You're always projecting three years out. And, and we as a board set a goal that we want our reserve level, which is the amount of money that is saved, it's untouched, it is for, you know, whatever recession we might enter one day. We have set that reserve level between 17% to 20%. So when I look at that three-year budget, I wanna see at the end that that reserve level is no lower than 17%. And this comes, we're a basic aid district. There was a period in Mountain View's past where we were flush with a little bit more money, and that's why our reserve got so high. We have been spending down the reserve. It was close to 24%, 25%. We've been spending it down. So we are technically deficit spending, and we're trying to halt that deficit spending right now. But doing that means budget cuts. And our assessed property values have slowed down, it's starting to drop significantly, and that's affecting our budget.
Try explaining to people why you are doing budget cutting when you've got $50 million saved up.
Yeah.
They don't understand it.
Well, it's not 50 mil, I mean, our budget's only $80 million, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's much smaller than yours. We have about 5,000 students. But, but yes, and everybody thinks like, Mountain View, Mountain View has Google. You, you have all these tech people, there should be so much money, it's so expensive to buy a home there now. And they don't understand how schools are funded. And that assessed property value, like, not this Prop 13, but the old Prop 13, not the one on your current ballot, really set up some huge problems for school funding in our state. And so a lot of, you know, a lot of the budget discussion ends up being, how can you help us find more ways to get money? We're going out for a bond right now.
There's a new Prop 13?
Yeah, on your current ballot.
Should've retired that number.
I know.
Yeah. Yeah, I would think that whether your district's in, in growth mode, or in declining enrollment, or whether they're an LCFF district, or whether they're a basic aid district, these change the way that the board interacts financially with the budget. Right? All right, another question. Let's, we're gonna go to the gentleman right behind you with his hand up in the blue, and then we'll come to you, okay?
What role, if any, does the school board have in textbook selection?
We approve curriculum.
I was gonna say, we have, we have advi, so we set up an advisory, we're in the, we just, we're in the middle of a science curriculum adoption. So we set up an advisory committee of parents, educators, administrators, that review textbook options. They then came and reported to us about the different criteria that they reviewed them on. And then two were selected to pilot this spring, so they're being piloted soon. And then that will come back to us again for us to make the final decision about which one of those two to adopt, but based on the feedback of the people who are actually having to implement it.
We do almost exactly the same thing.
All right, right here.
The textbook selection, you were talking about the, the curriculum. What about the textbook selection?
The curriculum is the textbook.
At this point, it's really.
The same.
You choose a program that's been developed that has a text with it and an online component with it, and usually some pedagogical information in it embedded.
All right, go ahead, next question.
My name's Seth, I'm a grad student here. You talk a lot about the people you work with, sort of, that fall under the hierarchy of the school board. I'd be curious, what has surprised you the most about working with the people who are higher up on the food chain, and how that has affected your work?
Higher up meaning advocates, or?
Well, whether it, whatever the structure is, I don't know that much about how California runs it, whether that's state-level government, whoever's setting your budget, whoever's dictating the limits of what the school board is able to do.
Good question.
So I, I kind of feel like, so we're, again, a basic aid, you know, locally funded district. One of the things that we joke about is that we sort of feel like there's no one above us. Right, it's like, how is it possible that we're it, right? Certainly, because we, our money comes from our local property taxes, that's something we don't have a lot of control over. But there's no one making a whole lot of decisions. I mean, I guess there's, there's policies that come down, you know, the state, I guess it's the, the state legislature in Sacramento. And they say, here's the new ethnic studies curriculum, this is the law, right? Or this, this is how we're going to.
All schools have to start at 8:30.
Right, right, schools can't start before 8:30. So I guess there's that, it's the legislature, and we usually know well ahead of time what's in the hopper and what's coming, so there aren't really any surprises. We just sort of prepare for, oh, this 8:30 thing is really gonna pass. Middle, high schools can't start any earlier than 8:30, starting in two years. So we knew for a couple of years that was coming, and now it's gonna happen soon.
The state education code is that thick. There is a, yeah. At my age, I don't wanna lift it anymore, but it is, it's quite long. And the state control is also through the finance system, where the local property tax is often, for most all school districts. You pay a local property tax here, but for most all school districts, in effect, the state takes that local property tax up into Sacramento and recirculates it and sends it back. So the state provides in California directly 82% of the operating expenditures of the schools. The federal government is about 9%, and the rest 10 or so is, is local. So the, the state assumed the local property tax and took it to Sacramento after the passage in 1978 of Proposition 13. So that leads to a state view that, who's got, the, the golden rule, who's got the gold sets the rules. And so the state does have a lot of rules. The state board that I was on for 15 years, we have a power to pass regulations down as a board itself. So it's a very complex web of state and local control that is there. The recent trend has been for more local control.
Since we're both locally funded, I think that there, we feel less of that than probably you did on your board.
Yeah, I mean, on a number of different things, I mean, so the way the budget works, we would get a preview of the, of the, of the governor's budget in, in January, and then what's called the May revise, where the governor puts out a, a sort of revised budget. And we're like in, on pins and needles during that entire time, because they're always changing, changing the formula, and we have, you know, our advocates come in and say, well, we think that this might happen, or that might happen. And it's just like, everything is reliant on the state, yet it's like a whole, whole mystery. And it, and it literally changes year to year. They're like, there's no, you know, and the state will all of a sudden say, oh, well, you know, we taxed Amazon, or whatever. And then they get a billion dollars, and they give half of that to the schools, and next thing you know, we're okay, or not, you know. So there's a lot of back and forth with that, so we're constantly focused on that. We, we also have our own lobbyists who will come, and we take positions on bills. So they'd come in and say, these 100 bills relate to education. And, and, and as a school board and the committee, we would say, we're supporting that, we want that one amended, we want that. And then they would go and actually, you know, lobby on our behalf. So there's a lot of back and forth with the state legislature. Also, another huge thing, and we didn't talk that, that much about charter schools, but for, for San Francisco, and this is true for a lot of school districts, the, the charter school, app, new school application would come to the school board, we would say, you know what, actually, we don't, we don't need that right now. We would vote it down, and then it, they go to the state, the state board, I guess.
It's up there.
And then they overrule us every single time.
Every time.
Every single time. And so it, it was this sort of charade where we would spend all this time, and all these hours, and all this testimony, everything, knowing that we were gonna vote, vote, vote it down usually. We usually voted for the reauthorizations of the ones we already have. But we vote the, the new ones down, because we, we didn't need all these new schools. And then they would vote it up. So it's just like, the state dynamic.
You appeal to the, to the county, you're the city and county. Appeal to the county, and then you appeal to the state on a charter school.
Yeah.
And they always approve it. Always.
Until recently, now.
Well, we, we always approved all yours, but not all of them.
But no, Sacramento now just hasn't.
You're correct on Sacramento. San Francisco, we approved all of yours, yeah.
So it's all these charter schools that the school district didn't want, but then they, they.
Yeah, I, I've stayed pretty mum about my own school board service, but just for a different perspective, when this is up here, we, I served on a board that was one of the few local control-funded districts in Silicon Valley, and we're small, 3,000 students. And we spent a ton of time on advocacy, because we lived and died by the state budget. I mean, every single year, we would, we'd have 12% reserve, then we'd have 2% reserve if the state passed through. These guys didn't talk to the pass-through on the pension cost, that, that decimated us, that completely decimated us. So as trustees on a, in a district that was in declining enrollment and really struggling financially, we were spending a lot of time with our local elected officials, a lot of time coalition-building with other districts in similar positions than ours. And so it was, it was a really big part of the role.
Yeah, the state raised your pension contributions 9%, I think, or something.
20-something percent.
20-something percent.
1% now.
Okay.
They give with one hand, take away with the other, constantly. Like, oh, we're getting more from the formula, and then next, but you have to pay more from this.
That was a big gotcha. Okay, more questions?
Can I, can I?
Oh, sure.
I would love to take that question in a slightly different direction, though, which is, we're talking about like state and funding, but something that we're running into in Mountain View is, Mountain View is having growth. We have projected student population growth in the thousands over the next 10 to 20 years, because Mountain View is planning, in theory, in North Bay Shore, where Google is located, and East Wisman, and these transit centers, between 10,000 to 20,000 housing units. And so that, and the property value's out there, it's 10 to 15 million dollars an acre. So if we need to build a new school, because we're getting 2,500 students, we do not have 10 to 15 million dollars an acre to buy that land. I mean, it's almost impossible.
You need like five acres at least for a school.
Well, so, and most of our elementary schools have seven acres, our middle schools have, you know, in the teens. And so we have been working closely with the city on trying to develop a school strategy at the city level. It can't be required for all new development, because we are limited in what our developer fees are as, as a school district that we can pull down. But for these precise plan areas, or special development areas, where developers want to opt into a higher floor area ratio, they wanna build something more dense, we're looking at how can we get them to pay money towards actually building a new school at that site? And how do we get them to give us land? And so that's, that's taken a lot of work with the city. We've also been working with our, we work with our state assembly member, Mark Berman, quite often. We had a run-in with PG&E when we opened a new school earlier this year, because they had planned a power supply line to go through one avenue. And, and it, when we opened it up, there's this thing called a vault, it's like a big box all the power lines go through. It was full. They didn't know it was full, but it was full, so we couldn't put the power line through. So they said, okay, we'll just trench around to the other side of it. So they started to dig around, but it turns out it's, it belonged to a homeowners association, and PG&E didn't have the easement to go around, so that got halted.
This type of thing happens a lot.
We opened Jose Antonio Vargas Elementary School in August on a generator, because we could not get a power supply. And, and, you know, fall is a busy time for PG&E right now, it's the beginning of fire season. So we worked closely with state assembly member Mark Berman's office, and he helped advocate, and his staff and his aides helped advocate to get PG&E to move forward, and we finally got electricity in December.
Wow. All right, how many more questions do we have time for, do you think? Okay, go ahead.
Thanks, hi. I was wondering if you could speak a little bit more to your experience trying to improve education outcomes for special populations in your district, maybe youth experiencing homelessness, in foster care, on probation, and how you and your team are building your capacity if you're working with CDU work groups, or consultants, or working closely with district staff?
I, we did a lot of that when I was on the board. I wrote a policy specifically for students with incarcerated parents. And, and we also did a policy for students who are experiencing homelessness. And it was, you know, I think it was, it was sort of a range of things that we had the ability to do better for these populations, but the first and foremost was just being intentional about it, of actually developing, you know, training around what these students needed, and, and really a recognition of their specific needs. Identifying partnerships and gaps that existed. So, you know, in some cases, there were particular opportunities if, if a student was experiencing homelessness, for the school to actually be an access point for getting into a family shelter or into housing, and we put that into place. Or in the case of students with incarcerated parents, there were some policies that we actually had that were creating additional challenges or barriers for that population, and identifying those, and actually changing policy around those. An example of that for students who, who have incarcerated parents, and there's actually, this is in San Francisco and in many districts, is a very large number of students that often are unseen. And things like the, you know, the books that they were reading, and kind of the conversations that were happening in class, and the language in class. So having teachers understand how to talk about, for example, making an assumption that, you know, a student had a father or mother at home, and things like that. But in addition to that, we had, we had policies that prevented there from being communication with, with people who were incarcerated, as, and in order to continue to engage them with their child's education. So we made it possible to actually have parent-teacher conferences at the jail, and have setup phone conversations between the jail and teachers. So there were, there were specific things, but thinking about like the range of things, either policies that were hurting, training that could help, gaps or opportunities and connections that we could make available, and then obviously, you know, resources and programs and things. So there were a lot of, I mean, there are different, specific populations, but those are two examples.
Anyone else wanna weigh in? Then we have time for one more question after.
Just real quickly, we, I would say, some of the populations that we have found that we haven't been successful in really supporting in the way they needed, were, we have the Tinsley Program, the voluntary transfer program. We have kids that come from East Palo Alto and, um, East Menlo into our district. It's literally three miles, but it can take like 45 minutes, right? So trying to engage, you know, at the end of the day, if a kid has to get home, if you wanna have a meeting with a parent, but it's, it's there at work, or it's, it's harder to engage them from further away, which is, you'll probably laugh at in San Francisco, right? You've got the whole city. But, but we, we started family engagement specialists, that every school would have someone who was identified if either we weren't seeing parents, or if a kid wasn't coming, their attendance wasn't great, or if there was a language barrier, those family engagement specialists would serve as a connector and, and a problem solver, and specifically helping the family access different resources that are already existing within the district. Because we found we had a lot of resources, but people didn't necessarily know about them or know how to access them. And then more recently, we have more unhomed, unhoused kids. So, so we've also started, I can't remember what it's called now, it's new this year, but there are coaches that we identified, I think we started with 40 kids. We identified these kids that are just needing more support and someone to check in with them, whether it's academics or something else. So there is a coach that is assigned to them, that is talking to their teachers, talking to their parents, talking to the, to the counselors, and to the students on a regular basis, and making sure they're connected to whatever resources they need.
So when I was here as a student, something that I was really interested in was the role of schools as institutional resource brokers. We are just one piece of the ecosystem that serves students and families. And, but we can be a connector. And so something that we have at our school sites that have students with the highest levels of need, so English learners, low-income families, students with disabilities, we have school community engagement facilitators, which fill a similar role. And so they are, they are the navigators of systems. There's, there's a joint powers agreement for a, a mental health, kind of, it's called CHAC in Mountain View, and they serve a lot of our student population, so we can have them come into schools, and we can refer students out. And then with students who may be unhoused, there's, there's a law called the McKinney, McKinney-Vento Act that stipulates that those students, even if they're unhoused, they still have a right to remain in their school site. You cannot kick them out of the district, or, you know, maybe they're unhoused, but they're in a shelter in San Jose, instead of Mountain View. They still have the right to attend our schools. And we have a McKinney-Vento coordinator at the district level, who works individually with those families, and works on things like, how do you apply for housing aid? We also brought in, there's, well, I won't, I won't say we brought in, they approached us and asked how they could serve our community. There's a group of parents that formed an organization called Listos Mountain View. And what their job is, what their organization does, is they provide legal advice to families where one or more of the parents may be undocumented, but the students may actually be American citizens. And so there's a lot of fear in our community. We had, we have had community members who have been removed by ICE. And so Listos is holding a workshop at the school my son's at, coming up soon. And they talk about, how do you apply for citizenship? How do you make sure that you have your visas? How do you make sure that your children have a visa for, if you're from Mexico, they have a visa for Mexico and for the United States, so that if you get deported, they have the ability to travel? And then setting up a guardian in absentia, so that if a parent is deported, there is somebody in the community who is going to take that child until they go through the immigration law process, and, you know, whatever comes out of it. So there's, there's so much need in our communities right now. But I'm glad that we can be a facilitator on connecting people. We can't do everything ourselves, but we can connect people to resources.
All right, last question. Anyone else? Anyone else? Yep.
Hi. Well, I'm kind of interested in knowing how you're actually addressing the issue of retaining and recruiting teachers in light of the fact that the cost of living is so high in this area, let alone finding a proper place to live.
So something that we're hoping to do, and we have, like I said, we have a bond on the March 3rd ballot, so if any of you live in Mountain View, vote yes on Measure T. I'm saying that in my personal capacity, not as a school board member.
This is for housing the teachers?
Yeah, well, no, it's, I mean, it's 259 million, it's a bond, it's, it's for facilities, it covers a lot of things, but one of the things in it is we've reached an agreement with the city and with the developer to build 144 units of housing for teachers and staff. And our goal is that that, you know, if this bond passes, we can make this more possible, that those apartments will be prorated for the teachers, and they can not only pay lower amounts, but they can also start saving their salary. So let's say in seven years, they might have about half of what would be a down payment in the area, about $120,000 saved up. And then there's an organization called Landed, that's a nonprofit lender, and they will partner with a teacher or staff member, and they will match that cash for down payment and help them purchase a home. And then they have an interest in the house. So if the teacher ever sells the house, or they have to either sell or refinance within five years, when they do, Landed gets a little bit of a payout, but it's not a huge profit margin. So we're trying to, you know, make this pipeline, and to put it in context, we have 666 staff members, so 144 is a pretty significant dent in that population. We want to make this pipeline towards homeownership in the area, so that we can keep and retain our teachers.
Real quickly, we, we identified a parcel of land that if, if and when the time comes, if we, you know, whenever we get there, we can build some, some teacher housing, some staff housing, not just teachers, staff housing. But we do have, we haven't started it yet, and we do have some teachers traveling from a long, long distance. And we are, we're spending some time educating the community that it is actually beneficial to your children to have your teachers live nearby, right? When I was a classroom teacher, when I lived far away from home, from the school, I'd leave right away, right? Whereas if I was right in the neighborhood, I'd leave and come back for an evening thing or on a weekend. So it benefits the children as well when, when the teachers are part of the community. So luckily, in Palo Alto, a lot of our teachers live here and have lived here for a long time, but a lot of them, as we hire younger teachers, it's really hard. Some of them are traveling long distances.
Similar strategies, one, we're trying to pay our teachers more, we did a parcel tax and increase their pay. We are building teacher housing, we have a teacher housing project, and we're expecting to do a number of projects in addition to that. We also developed our own kind of teacher training fellowship program in-house, and, you know, you go through kind of an initial eight-week training, and then do your, you know, actual teacher experience in, in the classroom in San Francisco. And that program recruits very heavily from people who are already in the schools, so they might be paraprofessionals, they might be working in after-school programs, and so these folks are already, likely already having roots in our community, and some cases, they're from there, and so we're seeing a lot better results than, from that program and from folks who come up through that, as opposed to like a program like Teach for America, where we were having very low rates of retention, and we don't, we don't have Teach for America anymore in, in San Francisco. And, and so having a sort of a, a pipeline that comes up through our own community, and then, you know, paying them more and building housing, I mean, it's really hard, it's really hard to keep them.
Okay, well, let's give our panelists a round of applause here.